You're in.
Stop over there.
Okay, now what do I have? I'm gonna skip number four for a minute. Talk about number five, request approved lighting plan for fifty-four East Hampton Road. Do we have a lighting plan? You should have a lighting plan. You don't have it in your package?
I don't think we got the condition when Wayne had the.
I have a lighting plan.
I don't really know if I got it. I don't think they gave us. Cause this was like, it wasn't a permanent application, it was something that we conditioned them to do something.
Yeah, we go, alright, so this is a lighting plan with a revision date of five twenty-nine. I don't know what the last one previewed was.
I think our mission was to come up with a maximum amount of foot candles that we would allow under the canopy.
For those of me who wasn't at your level, like you at night, can you, I know you gave a few numbers earlier on.
So what we did, everybody else was there, um, so.
Sorry.
We started at the Stop and Shop parking lot and the reading, and I forgot my notes, of course. And the assistant building inspector was there with us who knew the lighting tool. Um, and underneath the lights in the parking lot, it was about six. Um, the parking lot in general was very good, it was about, I wanna say three point five when you moved away from there. We went just across the driveway to the Stop and Shop gas station. And the lighting was different, there's a couple of new lamps in the lights that were bright. And then some of the canopy had older lights, so it was darker. Um, one area that we looked at was with the darker bulbs was eight, I think. Um, which we all agreed was okay, it didn't present any kind of safety hazard for us. When we went over to the brighter lights, it went up to twelve and twelve and a half. And when we set it on the ground, it was like twelve-foot candles. When we brought it up to the pump level or hip level, it went up to like sixteen, the closer you got to the light source. We went across the street to the Hess station. And the lighting there was, we all thought, pretty good. And that was between six and eight-foot candles.
Under the canopy.
Under the canopy, yup. Depending where you were in the canopy, in some parts the canopy would have two rows of lights and it would go up to eight. At the edge of the canopy, it would be about six, but still plenty of light.
Plenty of, yeah.
Also plenty of light, they had a contention that when somebody walked from their gas station pumps to the store, it would be too dark, but we found that there was plenty of light even at, you know, six and five-foot candles.
And even three and a half.
Yeah, even three and a half. And then we went down to our friend down the corner of Damon Road. And the foot candles there were up to twenty-six. Um, but of course that was built before the zoning regulations, we all thought that that was too bright. And right at the corner of Cole Morgan, you know, the property line, they were at like, you know, twenty-one or something, so it was very bright. Um, we didn't make a decision then when we were standing around, but I would posit that, you know, we would recommend.
What, do they have their friendy for under the canopy?
Twelve, thirteen. Which was the snowman show.
And our.
The brighter part of the snowman show.
Right. And our ordinance says though unfortunately regardless of where you are, any industrial setting, any commercial setting can be no more than five, right? A hotspot? So we're providing, we're giving them leeway by going anywhere above five. We're giving them actually a variance to the ordinance, a waiver?
So I guess, you probably maybe discussed it or whatever, but to me the big question was, was five inadequate? It seems like it's not that inadequate because you guys thought six was acceptable at gas pump?
It seemed like five at the ground was twelve at the tip or at task level. And ten, you know, it was six, seven, eight more than what it was at the ground. So ten, what have they asked him for fifteen or twelve? Twelve?
They say at ground level.
Yeah, so if that's at, that's at the ground, then you're talking maybe eighteen, nineteen at, at pump level.
That's the question we didn't know.
Five didn't seem to be any safety issue.
We don't even know for sure whether these are measured at the ground level. And if they are, then it's, it's more than bright enough. But then, who thought that the level at, where you're actually doing the work is important?
Right.
So, gas nodes or something like that. I can only assume that this is ground level stuff.
Right.
It's a projection on the ground.
We get a lot of those at the office and that's always been my assumption that those are at the ground.
Yeah, so I mean, I feel like I think these are really high, still.
I mean, I think that five was adequate, but probably low, but adequate. Ten-ish was fine, but if these are twelve plus six, eight, eighteen, twenty, that was too bright. That unnecessarily.
Do we wanna give them, I mean, do we wanna say ten? Do we want, can we, if we, we have to pick a number.
I think we wanna get as close to our standards.
So is ten too much and it's like eight?
I don't think we go above ten.
You have a ten.
Or five on the ground.
No, eight under the, what we're talking about. Yeah, under the canopy, I think we're, it's gotta be a little higher under the canopy.
Five and five on the ground.
Five on the ground is what it can be everywhere, that's, we're saying.
Or we went to eight on the ground.
I don't know, that's the question.
Eight on the ground under the canopy.
Twelve is like task level or something like that.
Yeah, I think, George, you said of the, at the Stop and Shop side, there were two bays, one, the other one, that was eight at the ground.
Right.
And that seemed fine.
That was the brightest.
The new, the new one?
No, there was a brighter one that was the one next to the inner one. It was the outer one, and the same thing with across the street to Hess, the outer one was eight, the inner one was fourteen, but there, the outer one was one row of lights. The inner one with two rows of lights, cause you had two pump by the stations. And that was fourteen.
And these numbers you've quoted are at task level or at ground level?
So I think we should just say, let's talk ground level.
Let's talk ground level with the knowledge that it seemed consistently six to eight more at hip or task level. So we're talking fourteen at the ground, it's twenty.
And, and it's interesting, one, we understand that a lot of people push for these higher lights for safety, but also just to market their product, whatever, for retail. And we could see standing across the street at Stop and Shop, Hess seemed to be really bright, this kinda oasis out there. When we got over there and took a reading, it really wasn't as bright as I had thought.
Well, the thing was, where it really was bright was right next to the building.
Right.
It was like sixteen or eighteen.
Yeah.
So that's what, and you could see the white building and that's what was so dramatic. But if you go to Bolduc's place, then that's the whole place is set up like this.
So the only, if we go ahead with a recommendation of allowing them eight at the ground, um, that's a precedent we're setting for any other gas station or retail store that comes into town, yes, right?
I think the value of the, of what I was there was, that we'd have an understanding of what different lights levels look like. So what bothered me about their NH, what their standards is, is it seemed like, it was a volunteer group, so that's why they haven't updated their website. It seemed like they were an advocacy group for retailers rather than a stand, you know, like a professional standard.
Right.
Yeah, sort of like the Mass Restaurant Association.
Yeah, they're obviously gonna create standards that are aggressive, so. I think we, I think we try and get as close to our standards as possible, but I'll defer to you guys what, what that actually is.
Now, the other thing though, and this came up, I can't remember if this was the same meeting, was this whole idea of there's gonna be a measurement done to make sure it's in compliance and then there's this degradation over time. So these, you know, when they do the initial installation, the level's gonna be twenty percent above. They will be, six months from now, the whole, you know, insects getting covers, the bulbs kinda degraded.
But then you didn't know if that would happen with the LED lights.
And that, it was just such an odd, it was the first time I never.
He's probably right, but that's a, that's a maintenance thing. So I think you go by what the new light is.
Well, so we're saying the day he opens, eight on the ground.
And if he maintains it, he'll keep it, if he doesn't, it'll get.
All they have to do is buy used light bulbs and they're, they're ready to go.
The restore.
This is just under the canopies, not?
Yeah, we're just talking about under the canopy, outside the canopy, um, they've got, well, there's one level that's five point two. For some reason. Five point one, five point two, four point two.
There was that one hotspot on the property line though. Remember there was, there's the, the spot on there. Their land, it looks like it's extend, but it's actually, it's the corner of the state land and there's one hotspot where it doesn't go down to zero.
No, I'm not talking about zero, I'm just talking about right outside the canopy, I think you have five point two.
So their plan shows under the canopy, what, fifteen twenties, did you say?
No.
No, thirteen point oh is the highest, thirteen point three is the highest one I see. Uh, but it, it doesn't go below, there's only one that goes down to nine point two, but most of them are twelve, thirteen, twelve, thirteen.
So are you gonna establish a standard for under these gas station canopies and then a standard for general site lighting?
General site lighting should agree with the ordinance.
The five, right.
I mean, it could be that we really have to modify the subject lighting ordinance, it would seem to me.
Can we do that or we need a city council?
Well, city council.
City council.
We can originate something.
We modified by saying that there was a, a different standard for gas station canopies, is that what's, that one thinking?
Well, we make it as narrow as possible, I think, but that would be second to this.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, it would make sense to figure this out and apply the standard everywhere.
But it'll also be important for us in our motion to state that, that we're, we're exceeding the ordinance because of the safety factor of the gas station canopy, I think. So that if somebody else doesn't come in, just anyone, and say, well, no, I wanna go up to eight foot candles also.
Why don't we say that we're exceeding it because we've done field investigation that would justify the, the change? Otherwise it's, um.
Right.
Who's, yeah. Decision on it.
So you guys feel, what is the light level you feel comfortable with, eight, six, five, nine?
I think it was eight, we were kind of, well, yeah, I mean, six was, six was fine on the, the dimmer part of Stop and Shop, right? And, and.
For under a canopy, it was brighter.
Hess was under, under the canopy was sixty.
And once, and once, on the outside, they were six, on the canopy, on the inside, they were in the teens, just cause there were two rows of lights.
There were two rows of lights.
How much?
They were in the teens.
It was like fourteen.
Teens, oh teens.
Ten teens, yeah.
There was, you know, the thing about, you know, the way that Hess station's set up is, you know, it's one outer bay on each end, but then there's doubles.
Well, they're all, I mean, it's all gonna happen, it's what the level is on the ground.
Right, but that, but the level on the ground in those middle bays was higher than the outer ones.
I got you, well, does that mean that we?
That was my little concern, cause the way this is designed is, it's most of it, it's two rows, a lot of overlap in the middle.
They have to figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, these are a lot more uniform than the experience that we had during our tests.
And that might be just the, the function of the fact that we, you know, some, I think you like.
They can put more of the.
You know, it might be that when they install that, there's not that uniformity to it, I mean, that's the thing.
So I'm kind of, we'll say, you know, give them eight.
Eight on the ground would be like thirteen, fourteen, which is, if they're gonna make a safety argument, just based on what we saw the other night, then there's no way should.
I was at, I was at nowhere past that.
So we're gonna make language that, that staff is recommending that prior to a certificate of access to the property owner should provide an engineer certification.
Do you wanna try that motion, Catherine?
I move that we allow, um, for, um, lighting under the canopy of eight-foot candles.
Maximum.
A maximum of eight-foot candles. Provided that prior to a certificate of access to the property owner, provide an engineer certificate, certification that lighting levels comply with these standards. Do we need to put in the, in the motion that outside the canopy?
Yeah, go put it all in there.
Okay, okay, that we, it's, we allow the proposed revised plan show LCD lighting under the canopy of eight-foot candles and below, outside of the canopy on a property of five-foot candles and below, and at the property boundary or in one area of the effective edges right of way at zero point five foot candles and below. With the additional provision.
Plus, just say that this is based on our.
Based on field studies, field exploration.
What was the date that you went out and did the field?
I've, it wasn't last Monday, cause it rained, it was Thursday, a week ago Thursday, today's the twenty-sixth, so it must have been the nineteenth.
I agree. Is there a second?
A second.
Part of the discussion. The motion, we're talking about lighting on the East Hampton Road. And based on our field trip, we think that a level of six was perfectly usable on the ground. And we're proposing that they be allowed to go up to eight under the canopy.
Do you guys ever figure out what the proper, where we're supposed to measure light?
Well, we're assuming it's on the ground, which means it's a lot brighter up above.
It's about eight foot.
That's what one over ours where it does.
I've never seen in black and white that light, that reading should be taken with the instrument flat on the ground or the instrument held at hip level. We haven't found that in black and white.
So you're saying eight at the ground?
Yeah.
Right.
Canfield, that's what, that's what we planned.
Yeah, I think that is right.
I mean, it has to.
We get a lot of these lighting plans in, you know, this.
Can we get someone's name? Better wear sunglasses. So that's, okay, any other discussion? All in favor? I guess everybody voted. Finally, let us know how light looks like. Okay, now we go back to item four, with this proposed amendment to the planning board.
Seven, eight foot candles.
So it feels safer.
So what's the lighting of, at the bar and the brewery?
Perfectly safe.
I still have a red leaf.
I found one, um, little change that hasn't been made.
Go ahead.
At two F, or two, yeah, F, new F.
What are we talking about?
In these amendments.
Should the Bible?
Which section?
Uh, section three point eight, conduct or public hearings.
Three point eight, what?
Uh, two F. There was another, it's just a typo, there was another reference there to opponents, so we wanna get rid of the, the word opponents. I think we got rid of it in the earlier F.
I still don't know where we are, but.
This is, this is a page of some?
The two F is all crossed out.
Yeah.
Why are we worrying about it if it's all crossed out?
What is now the new F?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
On the bottom line, the word opponents appears, and let's just take that out.
Yeah.
Cause I think we talked about that.
So that's gonna be changed to the public or something like that?
Let's cross the last three words out. Any issues, questions, right, period.
Last three words, okay. Okay. Does anybody have a motion on that? People want more time to read it. I guess people want more time to read it.
I thought they were, they reflected what we talked about before. I mean, we did do, we went through it before.
But it wasn't really in depth, was it?
That was pretty in depth, yeah. I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Is this the public hearing? Chair is not recognized, just George.
We just need to simply approve these.
Somebody can make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the planning board's files and rules as amended.
Okay, and as discussed at the planning board meeting two weeks ago.
As amended, two twenty-six, two hundred and eight.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Me?
Okay.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
For bringing us up into the, for the Spencer.
I think we're up like two thousand and two.
Okay, minutes. Instead of saying everybody, did anybody have a chance to read these? I thought they were riddled with typos. Riddled with typos, I think we oughta get them, they should be proofread before we get them.
When's Carolyn from the faculty?
Hey, I didn't have to, I wanna know, Mydens or Johnsons or, or Michael, because mine, I'm sure you never.
Yours are the ones that don't follow the usual format?
Right.
Yeah, it's usually.
I delay, be back.
Shall I?
What's that T-shirt say? Uh, bad spellers of America on the tide?
This one's, this one's.
Well, did you find out all those typos?
This is one came, I don't know, I don't know if I got through every single one. The one on page two of the April seventeenth. Halfway down, Deb Jacobs said that Amherst has to clean foot with tunnels.
Yeah, I noticed that one, we'll change foot to out.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Wayne really meant that, but.
No, you can clean, clean foot with tunnels.
I didn't actually read every word of every single one.
Pretty accurate record of our discussions.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't have my red pen with me. Okay, you wanna make a motion of that effect, George?
I'll make a, a motion to approve the minutes of April seventeenth, May eighth, May twenty-second, and also the minute of. Is it May twenty-second?
June twelfth. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Me?
Okay.
Unit in this.
You know, you know, I'm with.
Did you remember, at the end of the June twelfth match, there's a thing about Bill Hill knows of project change, suggesting a joint meeting with the Bill Hill CAC. Is there any follow-up to that or?
I think you won.
The last page of the, of the last seven minutes.
I said, you know, Terry, you gotta say.
The changes.
Right, the, um, we could discuss that briefly, the, um, the chairman of the CAC, also happens to be the mayor, said that the decision of the CAC major is completely within its purview, that's all it's saying.
We're talking about the master plan changing or what?
Is there gonna be a time when that comes to the plan?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, it, it still has to meet, this project still has to meet all the design guidelines and so on that we set forth.
The question I had in the last meeting was that we, my understanding, and I may be wrong, that was we gave a special permit based on the master plan that we had before and now they're, they're changing it, so I don't know if that triggers them having to come in for either a new or an amended special permit? I don't know whether everyone will say, well, it's a, wrongly, we were focusing the handling of the, the master plan when we made those decisions and looking at people in the village and stuff like that, so.
Too much of an old permit, same gap with that.
Cause you're saying they would have to come in as an amendment to the.
I don't, I don't know what the procedure is, but certainly the, this, we fought hard to the south campus where the, so, you know, the instructions on the road to storage and stuff like that, this seems substantially different and. So I, I don't know what the legal procedure is there.
But the question really is, is the, is the drop in the road changing? So, cause the buildings themselves are have to come in for you to look at and, I mean, there's two things, one is the special permit for your shit, the questions they need to come to that. The second is the design guidelines, which you were given. And, you know, the zoning says is they have two choices how they do designs. Either they have you approved building by building design, or they, you approve design, they have to approve design. So building come in would be one of two ways, either, I guess, three ways, one is they have to meet the existing design standards. Two is they could come back to amend the existing design standards if they're agreeing. Or three is they can come case by case for building, and we have to agree to that.
So the spec, well, I guess my question is, what was in the special permit conditions? Was it, did it explicitly mention the master plan?
Yeah, and that's what I have to look at.
Yeah, and the other interesting thing is, Wayne, we've never had an opportunity to look at the change. So I don't, I can't answer whether the drop in what road or change in the bike path, we.
Could we get like an overview of what the change was to master plan? Alls I've seen is a picture in the Advocate and a picture in the Gazette.
But I wanna do that in a public hearing setting, you know? I want somebody there to talk, I don't, just want, come to me in the mail and I have to decipher it. I need someone to explain it to me, I think the change in the bike path is a very radical change.
But that clearly has to come back to you, but the question is two, it's two, just a lot of opponents would definitely have to come back to you. The question, Keith raising is a different and early answer is, does the fact that the master plan itself changed mean that alone they have to come back to you? Now I don't have the answer. The second thing is, do they have to come back to you for specific things? If they change the design guidelines, absolutely yes. If they change the bike path, then they'll come back to you. I'm just not sure if just the plan itself changing comes back to you or the details of what it means. And therefore, they filed, the patent file, the consent files, um, for some parts, mostly timing sequences, um, but it relates. They're asking for, there's a portion of Metropolis for here, which does make sense, which is, um, originally, Mass Development was responsible for doing the bike path along, I'm sorry, the, uh, the realignment of Earl Street, unless they could find other money to do it. And it's now being done by Mass Highway, with Mass Development being responsible for any overhauls for that. So they want their, uh, the sidewalks that connect to it to wait until that project's done. Because right, basically, Mass Highway owns the road during that process. So, I'm sorry, Wayne, the realignment of Earl Street is the start, the, the end of the road away from sixty-six or? From sixty-six all the way down to Route ten. Oh, the whole stretch? It's currently in construction, right. Compiling is actually two separate contracts. The project we have for a bike path goes from Ramhouse parking lot up to the intersection of Earl and Grove and rebuild Earl and Grove, that's one project. It's under construction, the hill. And then there's a separate project, which is Route ten and Earl Street, including the signal there, all the way up to Route sixty-six. It's skipping the intersection.
So there'll be a new signal on Route ten or Earl Street?
There'll be a new signal on Route ten and there, I believe, are already conduits underneath Route sixty-six. So whenever it beats the orange, it can have a signal.
You're a part of Route, isn't that the part of Route ten where you go fifty-five?
Yes. Not anymore, it signals up, you're only go fifty.
The signal drops to the south of the bond.
Yeah, the people don't slow down, but at this gas station, the proposed gas station. Speed limit is thirty-five.
It's a thirty-five.
Yeah. Just so you know, we did push hard for a roundabout intersection, it was just, it was twice the cost and it was hard to justify.
The problem with that intersection is people coming off of Earl Street can't turn left when the traffic is heavy on Route ten. That's the.
There will be ones the lights in though.
That's why the lights.
Well, I guess, I mean, I, I'm sorry, Wayne, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I guess for one, two, three, I'm not sure for Catherine, and maybe even Jen, a lot of us weren't around, you guys did the special permit and a, a lot of the stuff that happened up at Hospital Hill. So in some ways I feel like I'm trying to catch up to what's either been agreed upon by you guys or, you know, a past version of this board, and what's still open to discussion. And what, um, options we have, I mean, we were just talking about the signs, the, the entryway sign. And I think the people who came here expected a five-minute discussion and a, a seal of approval. You weren't here, but that didn't happen.
We continued it.
We continued it. And I think in some ways because Hospital Hill, and this is what something, you know, we talked in the phone, Coliso, about a master plan, maybe I can get a copy of it. Because we do have design.
Design guidelines.
Design, no, no, but we have, but we can approve something because we don't like the design of it on Hospital Hill, isn't that correct?
Um, no, sort of. If they choose not to. Um, no, sort of, if, if they choose not to follow the design guidelines, it, that's come back, they have two choices how they do the design. It's sort of like central business, it was a cookbook, if they meet the design guidelines, you're limited to say, to finding what they mean in the design guidelines. If they don't meet the design guidelines, then it even goes.
Well, for example, now this modification to the master plan, which shows a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and thirty thousand square foot building in the massive parking lot, is that now a design guideline because the master plan has been changed? Or is it not, we still can have a discussion as to what that parking lot, what that building looks like when they come to us?
We should pull the design guidelines and look in what was specific.
Cause so when they, when you change the master plan, it's not changing the design guidelines, they're not the same thing.
Correct, the, the design guidelines is specifically not gonna approved by you, that never went before the CAC, correct? So in terms of that line, when you do in the CAC, they do the bigger picture master plan, you do the lower down design guidelines.
Sorry. Well, I was just gonna, I think, possibly over the next cup, two or three months, if we have a light meeting, it might be worthwhile, we have an agenda, just a refresher on all those aspects, you know, for those who haven't been on the board, a quick history of the permutations, and then for the rest of us, just an overview of what we've already permeated, what's gonna be our purview, because these things are gonna be coming online probably in the fall, right, to clarify.
Well, this, this first minor change may be coming in next year.
No, but like the big stuff may be coming in the fall.
This is asking for a change in the timing of things, but clearly, but, but the timing originally, they started talking about this a year ago, I don't know why they didn't come before, the timing originally had to do with this state project going on, but clearly it relates to that because they're asking to put off the timing for the bike path because they wanna know, and that, and that being clear about, they, they don't know what the outcome, you know, we don't know for sure what the options are, the master plan is sort of conceptual, we don't know can they go through the Cole Morgan parking lot, can they go around the right side, do they run the left side, so those things will all have to be, so they, they don't wanna come before you to think of which are the options.
The other thing is they're currently revising the NEPA permit, or there's, there's something.
That's been George brought up at the last meeting.
Yeah, so, I know, is it worth, remember the last time you put in, so, we talked about this the last time, where we, we made comment that we reserve the right.
Right, so, so I brought that up in the last meeting, George brought that up, I brought that as a possible action for you all to do. No one did anything to write it, June twelfth meeting, it says the board took no action. So staff wrote comments, not on your behalf, sort of on staff comments, that basically just say, you know, not making comments in plan, um, but know that all the details that are coming from planning board and not making comments is in no way applying the planning board's, like, staff.
So you've essentially done that.
Right, and, and this is frankly, has no legal effect, cause NEPA doesn't care, it hasn't, you know, in fact, Mass Development, we're not making this paper.
Wayne, you're talking about the notice of project change, that's correct.
Thank you for doing that for us.
Is our July twenty-sixth meeting, and we continue the sign from today to the twenty-sixth, I'm not sure what else, but can we have Terry, or who would be the person, would it be you Wayne? Who would come in and try to pull the background, what, 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 what the latest current events are?
So here's Adrian, it could be me, it could be Terry, um, twenty-sixth is a good meeting, because the other one is probably gonna be before you. It's a bad meeting, cause I'm not gonna be here, so if you're okay dealing with Carol and Terry, assuming Terry's around, I think it'd be a great meeting to have a discussion, cause I, I think if one of their applications, I think it's a relatively light meeting.
Well, we continue the sign.
Is that a Thursday?
Twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Okay, so it's a good, i- if you don't need me there, then I think it'd be a great meeting, cause you have a light agenda.
I can't, I mean, you guys, George, Brady, Keith, I mean, do we need Wayne, do we need Terry, is it?
I think we need Carol and Owen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we necessarily.
That would be my preference.
Well, Carolyn's not thinking of any more second quarter Thursday's.
Yeah, I think we want Carolyn, Carolyn or Wayne, I think Carolyn has to work on it to do that.
If Carolyn, if you guys are, if Carolyn, I, you know, this, this stuff's gonna start coming up sooner rather than later.
Bruce, you have no idea what's going on, so.
And we've got Ken, who's been here since the get-go, so.
Since the beginning of time.
Right, that's why, you know, I kind of felt, you know, in some ways when the sign.
Maybe I, I was wrong, that we didn't have as much control over the design of the sign as we did, if, we do.
Some of us probably have the design guy, guidelines already, but maybe, I don't know if you mean pass. And can you make copies of the, all the permits, or at least the, the ones that are significant? Like you probably need the subdivision ones, possibly the, the special permit.
It'll take a few months to track them down.
This is, this could be an undergraduate course or graduate course.
Well, the thing is, we're gonna get, we're gonna have people come, as soon as the Cole Morgan thing starts, we're gonna have a packed house, and I'd rather us look like we all are familiar with all the rules and regulations in front of a group of a hundred people.
Well, that's the unfortunate fallout of the tax median decision, is now that we'll be the ones faced with all those questions, I think, from the. Well, but theoretically, was the tax job too?
No, I, no, I'm just saying that unfortunately for us, that's typically, the decision we get good is that, as a permit body, we, this is where things, people start seeing us going up.
Right, and if it's anything like last summer with the hotel, it's, you know, there were, a lot of people with some very strong ideas, and I imagine there's gonna be, you know, we had people here for the sign, a couple of people who felt very strongly about the sign, so I imagine a hundred and thirty thousand square foot building and a four hundred and fifty car parking lot's gonna equate to some equally passionate.
Sixty-second tour of permits that they got, just so when you get all your package before this. So, in essence, there were four votes, and they may have been combined votes, I don't remember that piece, but there were four, in essence, permit approvals which you gave to the project. Three of which you have ability to govern if they're gonna come back, one you don't, so let me just go through them all. The, the first, and again, no kicker water, they got a subdivision permit, subdivision members, when you build a new road, you need approval. If they choose, and I'm aware of what puts the package, but if they choose not to build a road to the south campus, they don't need to come back to you, cause if you have a permit, you get the choice not to use the permit.
Just to clarify, when you talk about a permit, every permit covers both the south and the north campus?
They got some, see, that's the part.
That's where it gets tricky.
Right, I, I have to look at, this special permit definitely covers the entire campus. The subdivision, I don't remember if they got, I think they got separate phases, but I'm not sure about that.
Do they get amended?
I think they did set it so.
Does the special permit not get amended, so it's, it can be?
That's what you do, they have to come back to you, right, so, so the subdivision permit, the first one, they can just walk away from it. There's no, you know, obviously this happens all the time, you approve projects and the market goes south and someone doesn't build it. So, if, if there's conditions in the subdivision permit you like, tough, because maybe just disappear and I'm doing it. The second permit is the special permit, that was definitely issued for the entire campus, that was the one that's around the, the master plan, but I don't know if it was, the master plan was illustrative, in which case the details that matter, or if you're actually including the master plan. I, I think it was illustrative, I think it was the details, but I'm not sure, that's one permit, if they have to amend it, they could have to come back to the board. The third permit was the site plan, the site plan was funny, because what they did is they got a site plan for the entire campus, sort of the master planning level, and that would clearly have to come back before you, because that's changing, so the idea was, as master developers, they're getting a site plan permit, and then they wanted, they assumed that every individual parcel developer would come before you for approval of their parcel. So we always knew if a parcel came before you, that developer would have to come before you for a site plan for that. Mass Development thought they were done for the overall campus site plan, clearly that's changed, so subdivision doesn't have to come before you, special permit, I need to research, um, you can read it when you get in the package. The overall site plan absolutely has to come before you, because they're making changes for that, so the bike paths, for example, the bike path is a permit condition, both the site plan and the subdivision. Subdivision goes away, but it remains inside, and maybe special permit as well.
There was a site plan, did you?
Overall, so, so, not the lots, right, cause the idea with Mass Dev, developments, the master planner, so they wanted to know where the water would go, where the sewer would go, where the bike path would go. And then they were leaving it to end users to deal with the details. I've got a few right here where involved car came forward, but that was a more recent one, that they got a site plan of the entire campus, and that's the building in construction on Earl Street, I know. And then as a condition of the special permit, they need you to approve the design standards, and so you approve the design standards, and again, they say in effect, if they can live with the design standards, they're all set, if they wanna change the design standards, they have to come back, so Cole Morgan knows, for example, that the facade of their building along the street would have to be masonry, it would have to be two stories, all issues which are in the design standards, but then maybe other things which they have to come back to you for.
And that's kind of leverage that we have in this project, do we have any leverage or just?
Well, yeah, in certain terms, the design of the building, you have total leverage, right?
Well, you know, designing a building, the face of the street.
Well, depends whether the leverage means we can reject it or not, or if we can modify the design.
Yeah, modify the design.
Is that, Wayne, is that similar to the sign that I was here in, in front of the board tonight, where the leverage was you could, well, you could deny it, or you could say if you come back with a different design, we'll approve it, I mean.
Yeah, it's kind of a little different, cause signs are content neutral, so you can't adjust the sign, you can say it's too many signs around, approve it, but you can't change the sign.
Some of us didn't like the content of the sign. The content seemed to be kind of a bargaining. Commerce community.
Now, I, I do have to tell you that if they come back with a sign you like, and then you approve it, and then the day later they go for the building inspection and wanna swap it out, it doesn't require any permits, they do that by right. So, you know, unless you go if you want to change it, was that?
Unless you put a condition in there, then it has to be that same.
Is that, we can't do content, sign? Other than some of the traffic saves, you know, flashing red or flashing yellow or flashing green, but, um, I'm not sure you can have, you can, you know.
Recommendations, we just have a lot of recommendations.
Even if it's a special permit, you can't. Signs are pretty tricky, cause it's first amendment issues, so you're much less limited on signs than you are in almost anything else.
So where to get in there, Bruce?
I'm here, I just, I wasn't sure where to go with it when we were sitting here, so.
Just back to Catherine's original question about the June twelfth meeting and the talk about getting together with the CAC and the planning board, we've tried that a couple of times, um, I don't know if it was helpful, it's such a large group, it's fifteen of them and ten of us, and, uh, I don't think it is.
I don't think we need to meet with them, I just think we need to get up to speed with the board, what we've done in the past, where our purview is and what may be coming.
Is he up to getting to them?
I don't.
I don't think so, it's, um, if some of them wanna come and kind of say something during a public hearing of why, how they're feeling or what they're doing, that's great, but it didn't seem to be a real dialogue and a discussion.
The thing about the CAC is the kind of committee that sort of drives me crazy, because there's fifteen people, and most of them have very narrow views, one of them represents mental health, one of them represents housing, and they don't care about the project as a whole, all they care about is their own special, the thing, it's not particularly great if you wanna reach a consensus about stuff.
I think where the joint meeting is, it might be helpful, is actually a totally different area, because I think it not involve the level of detail that you guys are on, so talking about some of those issues that just, they, they're, you know, especially where the bike path just should go, is there a part of their discussion, the voice left that in the air? I, I think the other issue is, you know, the comprehensive plan, this San River Hampton, talks about where development should be occurring, part of that is talking about, you know, if we, if we wanna get some number of new units in the sort of dense urban core, talks about just the state hospital, the great opportunity to get those units, that's the big issue with CACs we're talking about over the next year. I think that might be more of an area of overlap, is do you wanna have more, you know, maybe what's happening now is, master plan allowed two hundred and seven units, and they could do ten percent over the master plan without having to come back. And in other words, what happened last year, we adopted this forty-yard district, cause they got exactly the same number of units, they didn't get any new ones, but they got the same units and half the space. Now the top of the hill is unprogrammed, and it's always, you know, we always knew they'd come back at some point, so CAC began those discussions last meeting, I mean, before. It's less, last meeting in detail, maybe before a little bit, about what should be the right thing, they started with a, a tour of that area, the unprogrammed area, talked about that. And I think that's, again, you've had some turnover, but that's the area the planning board's been advising for a long time, there should be more units.
But the, the forty-yard district that we created, they don't have to build it to that density, they can just, they can just build the, the permitted amount, and they can still build up into the north. They don't have to, to build at that density.
And they're gonna build a little bit less than zoning allows, but enough that there wouldn't be that many units left. So yes, the northern part of the campus, they have some units before they get to two hundred and seven, but not many.
I guess my, my immediate concern is that we're, we're up to speed on what our purview is for this project, so that we can get it as good as we, you know, envision it should be, rather being blindsided at the last minute with something being forced in our thoughts and us going, oh, we did, I don't know how the public feels.
Well, that's in a way, that's almost how it felt, like, you know, we, I thought it would've been nice to at least have been informed by the CAC that their, this was on their agenda, that, you know, even if we could have attended their meeting without having a joint meeting, we could at least gone and heard what was being proposed, that would've been, you know, twisted the light. Because if, you know, a change like this, the scope of the change, it's a, it's a pretty big change for the, for that part of the, the plan. Had to read about in the paper.
It's also a big opportunity, some people would say.
It is, and for some people are, are very, probably extremely excited about it, but, um, you know, when I compare the two versions, these things combined, I hate it.
I think, I'm not necessarily opposed to call them, or any big industrial type thing up there, I just want it to be done in a way that meets the village concept, that.
Right.
Yeah, you know, why people are envisioning for that year, you know.
And Cole Morgan, they've been talking about that for years, though, going up there.
Oh, that's not, I mean, the surprise to me was not Cole Morgan wanting to go up there, the surprise to me was the scope of change that happened, that the CAC approved without much ability of the public or us, if you'd be nowhere. So, I mean, changes are bad, surprises are bad.
Well, conceptually, they, what CAC said was, this was okay as far as they were concerned, it's not okay necessarily as far as the public or the planning board is concerned.
But I think a lot of people think that's.
The planning board is gonna have a public hearings, and there's gonna be ample opportunity for public input, other than, it was sort of, conceptually, it's okay with the CAC. I mean, I think a lot of people think it's a home run, because you don't have to try and market all these several little properties. And frankly, I don't think, if, if they preserve this, I'm, I'm a little upset with the loss of the buildings along the street.
Right.
That's the most disturbing part, the rest of it could all be full of, uh, Butler buildings.
No, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to confuse my, my disappointment with being surprised with, you know, my feelings of approval or denial of this particular project. I was surprised it happened without us knowing about it, that was my, my biggest issue.
The process.
The process involved, and then also, my, the thing I'm concerned with when this does come to us is that I know what our abilities are to.
Well, yeah.
Go in on it, and that's something that I, 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 you guys have been on the board longer than that, to deal with this more than I have.
Well, I'm also, I'm also on the CAC, and I, I didn't have much notice, but I have to admit, I did not have a polar beer moment, maybe I should have in notifying people on the planning board, but I didn't, it wasn't the planning, it wasn't the planning board.
Oh, no, I'm not, again, I'm not blaming you either, I just think that, you know, if, if the CAC, you know, this entity is gonna make, you know, you're just a member of it, knight in chair, you know, but, but there should've been some, I don't know, just some notice.
And what we talked about too, was that, just conceptually, was this proposed plan was so drastically different from what was envisioned for, that shouldn't somebody give these developers a heads up, so they don't flush this whole design up, out and try to force it down our throat, having not ever been able to see it, you know, and raise those concerns to anybody in the first place? We talked about that, I mean, I think that was your concern.
Of the?
That we never heard, we, we found this, this is great, Cole Morgan's coming, everyone's excited, but look at this plan, and the first time we saw this plan was in the paper, and we compared it to this plan, it's so different, but we've never got a chance to.
Yeah, but that, that original plan, except for the road, is all conceptual.
Well, I know, but that, I think the road is the big thing, is that instead of buildings on the road, you've got parking.
Well, the loss of the road means one, one thing that somebody suggested at the CAC meeting is whether the parking lot would be purview, so otherwise you could walk through there and stuff like that. And my feeling is it's gonna be like an armed camp up there, and I think it'd be really desirable for them to design it so that they didn't feel that the parking lot had to be secure, it could be a little bit more of a village walking place.
Well, does Cole Morgan consider the CAC the approval they need? Or is Cole Morgan?
No.
The thing we need to understand what our design standards are.
Yeah, and a lot of what I, for me, the issue is, I just don't know, that's, I'm, so, I mean, if Carol and Terry can help us work through some of this stuff, you know, that, that would probably answer a lot of the questions. but I don't know what Cole Morgan's thinking.
Well, one other thing, the CAC recognized the relocation of Cole Morgan to Village Hill to be a major change, which requires mass development to file an amendment to the master plan. The CAC decided that. Then, they decided, that they approved the amendment, so it was a two-step process. It could've been, they said it didn't, it wasn't really a major change, but they did say it was, and they presented it. There was not a public hearing, I mean, the public was, it was a publicly advertised meeting. But, um, the whole process of all the new approvals and stuff like that does have to come through us, and that's...
Are those the minutes from that meeting?
Yeah, it's just, it's, you know, I, I, I'm afraid, I'm not sure if you're the one who said it, but now, I feel like the public, whenever they're, you know, get mad at us because we do things, you know, without telling them.
Oh, yeah, I was like, yeah.
Yeah, you know, in a sense, that's what I feel like, I was almost like, oh, it's like, what's going on, I don't know.
It's like this guy who was here tonight, you know, who's a neighbor of that sign.
Oh, right.
A legitimate public complaint. So, do we have a whole lot more meeting to go here, guys, 'cause I'm fading.
Another round.
We, we tackled seven on the agenda.
Beta?
Yeah, proposal changes. We tackled it, but the runner was very elusive and kind of slipped through our grasp.
We're not sure about the color coding here.
Well, for emails, you like, you guys like it?
Well, we will, I like the idea of the flashing, like the sign, the flashing red and flashing green.
The concern was the yellow, if you went to print it in like a white, yellow would, you wouldn't see it in the text.
Who can go on?
Wayne, I've got this, this email from the North Hampton Soccer Club about the traffic studies and stuff they did, and I'd like to give that to each member. At some point, I, I wanna schedule, there's two sheets for each, each body here.
Can you read it and discuss it?
So, I, I think we'll discuss it the next meeting, but we should, we should be able to, I wanna be able to hear the soccer club defend themselves.
I might have to recuse myself, my kid just made the team, so...
I don't think that...
Do I, do you want them to...
I'm gonna need at least a month to read this.
But, but, you said that you...
You got it. The building commissioner, he didn't take any action on the complaint or...
I had done the...
I don't know where we are in the, so, what are we getting this for, I'm confused.
Read it.
And then we're gonna...
This is the, well, I wanna schedule a chance for the soccer club to, to present their case. Before, when we discussed it, they weren't here.
Unless you're taking the action, what's the point of having it?
Pardon?
But there's no action since before you go.
Well, they're supposed, well, okay, so we, we present, they've presented this report, this is it. Read it, that's it, okay?
Well, I'm not gonna read it, I gotta save it till somebody hears it.
Well, I guess I'm saying the opposite, I'm saying it may make sense to read it and then figure out if any actions necessary. Because, and there's no permit before you, there's no request for building inspector before you, so if reading can send a long, then certainly...
There was a request for the building inspector, and I got the impression that we came down on the soccer club like a ton of bricks, and they didn't have any, you know, they didn't know about the hearing, they were, you know, they were in the same position that a lot of people are. And they, at least they should have the main court.
They've got an accomplishment listed, which couldn't have happened. This is supposed to happen July two thousand and eight, to Stephen, I suppose. These are things they planned to do?
I haven't read it yet, I just got it today.
Hey, you wanna do it on the planning board? On a regular basis? Do you find guys kind of live the board directly?
I find the, uh, the preservation committee to be more direct. You're kidding.
And, well, in the special permit, I think I asked you, Wayne, that there was no language that said that they had to present, they just, I physically presented it, just give a report.
Right, so they asked to come, and based on how many of you all had, I said, who has written reports on where they addressed it, and did you guys figure out if you wanted to come?
Do, do the board members feel it'd be wise to put this on the agenda and have a discussion and invite all the parties, the building inspector and the soccer club and, at this point in time, and the neighbors?
No. Uh, no.
See, the one thing that I think was important was that this is North Hampton Soccer Club, not Western United, who's the co-owners of this permit, right?
That's, that's the problem, right? The property owner said to them, you have to get married to get a permit, we're not gonna let you do it separately. And so, I think North Hampton Soccer Club's doing a good job, West United, not so much. And the soccer club wants to get credit for doing a good job, but the problem is, it's not too, you know, if there were two permits, that would be easy to do. There's one permit, they're jointly and separately responsible for the outcome there, and that's the essence of the road.
Right, so, I mean, if we had North Hampton Soccer Club, we would need West United here, and we, I'd wanna see something from them. Well, right, it seems like they're the ones who are dropping the ball, that's right.
I think until the building commissioner either requests a hearing or makes a finding on this special permit, I don't think there's any need for us to get embroiled in...
You don't think there's any PR value that having, you all heard? Since they were not done?
The, the property...
Nothing happened, right?
No, PR.
Well, I think we had, I think we had to take it home, we can read it, we can sleep on it, we read it. It also depends on what the neighbors do down there. If they complain more to the building inspector, he may come back to us for guidance, we're gonna have to address it.
It should be quiet this summer.
But I'm just saying, why don't we just wait until there's something for us to act on before we get that?
That's fine, that's fine, I mean, that's sort of what I...
They show up and then the residents come, we wanna be heard, and then next week we have the residents coming and that.
No, I would, I just think we'd have to...
But, you know, I mean, I'm just saying we have...
Well, at least we have the report now, we can...
We have enough trouble with permits that are made depending.
Okay. So, we'll kind of table it in this... But I wanted, I mean, I should talk, but I want everybody to read it and try to figure it out. Yeah, and we should also put more pressure on the city council. Fields and fairgrounds are a waste of space down there.
Smaller, isn't it?
Yeah, waste of space down in fairgrounds.
Oh, I have a thought, thought you have a...
What's this for your traffic mitigation and tangential standards, is that?
I missed the last transition. I have, somebody move, why don't you move it?
I know that we adjourn in a second.
Okay, are the, are all in favor?
Early.
I guess I'm like, we're gonna call the process.
Move, the most adjourned takes over, I'll go very hard.
I think it's a debatable, let's debate it.
The world of the majority is a subcommittee.
Yes, I need a head-hog subcommittee to serve as a chair.
I'd say we go check the line.